All right, it's ten o'clock and I want to welcome everybody to a special meeting of Harden County Commissioners Court. Good morning, everyone. Again, welcome to Harden County Commissioners Court. It's a special meeting today. It's ten AM, April the fifth, two thousand twenty-two. All members of the court are present. This meeting is called to order. Please rise for the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance. Dear Lord, I want to thank you for this day and thank you for all of the men and women who work hard every day to make Harden County a better and special place. Thank you for the men and women who work hard every day and every night to protect us twenty-four seven, watch over them every day and every night. Also, Lord, thank you for the men and women who are working abroad to protect us. They've got some tough jobs ahead of them, I believe, in the next few years, and we just ask you to watch over them as they protect us, our country, and our world. In your name I pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Judge.
Yes, sir.
Item number three, considered request by Alyssa Freeman, deputy county clerk, to authorize the county judge to sign a notice of general primary party runoff election to be held on May twenty-four, two thousand twenty-two, and notice of general primary Democrat party runoff election to be held on the same date.
That's a lead.
That motion by Commissioner Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Young, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. You didn't want to say anything, did you? All right. Item four, discussion and possible action concerning eligible projects presented by Trailer and Associates for the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, HMGP, related to FEMA, DR four-four-eight-five, the COVID-nineteen pandemic. This grant application deadline for this program is April the twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two. Good morning, how are you?
Good morning. Um, Will, how are you today?
Doing good. Thank you for being here.
Certainly, always happy to be here. Uh, just a little bit of information about the program itself. There's approximately five hundred fifty-five million dollars available in this pot of money, so, um, now's the time to throw as many darts as we can and see what sticks. Very recently, as in the last week or two, FEMA did release some information that all disaster declarations from January first, twenty twenty, through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, which includes the COVID declaration, will see a reduction in local share and an increased federal share. So again, another reason to throw a lot of darts at this program because rather than the standard seventy-five-twenty-five split that we would see on this program, it's going to be a ninety percent federal share with a ten percent local match requirement. And so previously unaffordable projects could very well become affordable, um, under this program. Applications are due April twenty-ninth. I do anticipate that there will be at least one extension. There usually is for HMGP, but I try not to depend on that. And the requirements, of course, are a current HMAP and that the project reach a benefit cost ratio of one or higher. So, not a ton of requirements. This is not saddled with the low to moderate income requirements that we see with our CDBG projects. And just a reminder, I know y'all have had these before, but just, um, to reiterate the fact that even though this is a COVID-related program because of the disaster and that's what everyone, you know, perpetuates it as, yeah, hey, this is COVID money, it's not. Um, this program was never designed to handle a pandemic. It was designed to mitigate risks associated with fire, wind, floods, some drought contingency plans, but mostly flooding, fire, and wind. So, that's the umbrella we're still working under, even though it's COVID money. Um, some of the eligible projects are going to be what we normally see. Um, planning documents and studies are eligible, property acquisition and demolition, uh, elevation of flood-prone properties, flood proofing, retrofit of buildings and infrastructure as well, safe room construction, which I know y'all got one of those underway, um, flood control projects and structural drainage. So the normal projects for HMGP. Um, key to successful application, Tedom has repeatedly stated, every time I've seen them out in public, through emails, on telephone calls, over the last few months repeatedly, um, they've expressed a desire to fund large-scale projects. I think that they are, um, to put words in their mouths, tired of the kind of nickeling and diming this money, and, um, it's a lot of paperwork on their end, especially when it's a large pot of money. Um, while there's still going to be the five percent initiative set aside for some of the smaller projects that don't meet the benefit cost analysis requirements, um, which that's typically where we see generators, they're still going to fund things like that, but, um, they don't want the entire program to fund generators. That would, um, be extremely time-consuming on their part and everyone else's. So, we want to make sure that we're going to get the most bang for our buck and submit those large-scale projects. Um, we also have a new mechanism to make these more attractive to Tedom when they're reviewing them. Because they're submitted electronically now, um, they do have a section more or less where, hey, give us some alternatives. If we can't give you all of the money to fund this whole thing, what can you do? And kind of a negotiation inside the application. It doesn't hurt your chances of funding, um, the entire project. I've actually had one that we did this, they came back and said, hey, we're gonna, we don't have enough money. Will you take this lesser amount? We said, sure, and then they came back and said, oh, actually, not only do we have enough to fund that, do you want to increase the scope? So, it doesn't affect overall the project. It just gives them another avenue to fund it. Um, we also need to focus on structural, um, improvements and reductions in flood if we do a drainage project. The new BCA toolkit removed a lot of the weight from lack of access. It did increase environmental and social impacts, um, but they mostly are looking for reductions in structural damage, um, after the project is completed. And then, as I said earlier, I do anticipate there'll be a, um, at least one extension of the application deadline. But the earlier we get it in, the more likely it's going to be, you know, to be considered. Um, technically, the money is supposed to be first come, first served. We know that's not entirely accurate. These are handpicked at the end of the day, but the sooner we get them in, the, the better it looks. It looks like we're prepared for it. We know they're a priority, and here it is. Please give us the money, more or less. So, um, a couple of the projects we've talked about already, um, is a Boggy Creek study, and possibly a generator for the
Performing Arts Center in Lumberton?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. A lot of people refer to that as the FEMA Dome, but that, that building does not have a generator, and that is the building we rely on during a disaster for our first responders, and then after the disaster, that's the building that we rely on for, uh, supplies and, uh, things of that nature. So, in the past, uh, industry has brought a generator up here and hooked it up to that building and got it running, but they, they want us to put a, a permanent generator on that building, and so we've looked at some different grants. It looks like this one would be acceptable, although you just said maybe not.
Well, we still have the five percent initiative, so it will, it will be kind of shoved over to the smaller pool. That's still twenty-seven million dollars. I mean, that's still a lot of generators. Um, it's just that, and that's fine. Um, we just need some competitive projects where the, the revenue is full as well.
Bless you.
Thank you.
When you, uh, talk about competitive projects, in the past, excuse me, in the past, when we deal with FEMA, uh, as far as disasters, it's pretty much who got hit the hardest. Now, how are they going to determine who gets this money since we don't have a disaster?
Well, that's going to be an interesting, um, outcome to see what happens. I don't know if they are going to take this as an opportunity to spread money throughout the state since it's, it's one of the few times that there is a statewide disaster. Now, the winter storm was also, but there was only about thirty-eight million dollars in that pot of money. Um, so they could very well take it as an opportunity to fund projects outside of their normal, um, kind of southeast Texas dome that they have. You know, that's, that's generally where this money goes, or they could continue to focus on these projects. We really don't know the answer.
Was there a monetary threshold?
No.
LMI?
No LMI, no minimum or maximum application. We've had them funded, um, in all price ranges.
That's good news.
So it truly is what your, what your community priorities are.
Is it statewide competitive or national?
Statewide.
Well, you brought good news today.
Well, hopefully. So y'all, y'all think, y'all let me know, um, preferably, um, you know, I'd like to have these applications ready for review, you know, at least a few days in advance. Um, so the sooner the better that we can decide on some projects. If we have any questions, let me, yes, sir.
There's a portion of road we're not going to be able to complete through, uh, with LJA on Dorstor, and this may help us get from end to end, sixty-nine to ninety-two.
Um, is it just road repair or reconstruction?
Drainage, drainage and reconstruction, yep.
Okay, and it's changed, okay. Then, yes.
And so, I don't know if, I'd like to visit on that because that would complete that road all the way through.
Um, I'm happy to stick around after the meeting and visit with whomever needs you and has questions.
Or maybe do some research and send you an email.
Okay.
Only a local call share is in kind contribute to that or what?
It is indeed. And management fees for these projects are now separated out from the budget. Um, they are not so, you know, um, funny, it looks really weird when you put it in paper. I'm trying to explain it, but they're actually separated out and paid by FEMA at one hundred percent reimbursement. The county would still be responsible for payment of invoices, but then would be reimbursed one hundred percent, and it's its own budget for management costs now. So when we do talk about the ninety percent, ten percent share, it will be just construction and engineering.
Would, uh, would the court agree that one of the projects we could, uh, apply for would be the generator for the Performing Arts Center?
Absolutely.
And that would be a ninety-ten, and we would ask the school district and the city of Lumberton to help us with match. Of course, they may say no. But, uh, once we know what that amount is, we would go to the school district and the, uh, city and ask for them to assist with the match on that.
Do you know if the city is, uh, pursuing?
I don't know. I don't know. Do you know, Aaron?
I, I do not know if we're pursuing these ones.
Thank you. And then, uh, the other project that I brought up to, uh, Trailer and to Aaron was a detailed study of the Boggy Creek, uh, drainage channel and any others in that area that you wanted to throw into that. I don't know if y'all, uh, Amanda, I think you maybe asked about Black Creek.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, any others that we could add to that? Uh, I'd like to see us do a good study of that so that later on, when the money comes available, we've got a study available, ready to, to show what construction needs to be, uh, done in that area to improve drainage.
That would be great because that's a prerequisite for, uh, any projects is to have that hydraulic study, and we've attempted it before and it failed, but I think that would be great if we could do that.
So if we could, if we could give her the go-ahead to start working on those, and then what I'd like to do is maybe think about what else y'all would like to see done. And at our next meeting, April the twelfth, we can give her further directives on any other projects that we want to see included in that application.
Any information that you can supply us as well, I'm working with Sabine River Authority on their, uh, fifth funded study of the lower basin, and any of the projects that are identified through these studies, we could actually feed to them as well for inclusion in the water development priority plans. Again, just identification is something that is becoming more and more, um, required, like you said, through all these other funding. Um, they're placing more and more, uh, emphasis on having some sort of plan or study done beforehand, so, um, this could lead to a lot more funding down the road.
Judge, with those items that you just talked about, was that your motion? Well, uh, it's not an action item in my opinion. Discussion and possible, possible action. Uh, yes, it is, yes, sir. All right, then I second it. All right, so I have a motion by the, uh, by myself, seconded by Commissioner Kervindahl, that we would include, uh, as part of our application, a generator for the Performing Arts Center, and then a separate project for a drainage study to include Boggy Creek and Black Creek. Any others in that area?
Parkway Life Ditch, is that one of them?
Well, that's already included under the ARPA funding, which is a hundred percent funded, so I think, uh, we'd do better just to stick with that. Unless you have a recommendation.
Is, is there going to be any kind of, uh, study on Pine Island Bow?
I think that's included as part of that, uh,
In Nature's River?
Well, they're in the LMBI doing some kind of study to do with the Pine Island Bow.
They are. I'm not as familiar with theirs, um.
And we can't touch the bow?
Yeah, we can't touch it.
The meeting you and I went to in Sylvie, that was the nature study.
Yeah, right.
Was you at that one?
Me?
Yes.
Uh, I don't, I don't remember. It, it's the group that you just mentioned you're working with.
Right. We had, we went to a meeting with them.
Well, they're doing that study.
Right, and that's why I was wondering if there were, if, if it was all going to overlap, like she said, it overlaps with Sabine, uh, yeah.
Their study is a little bit higher level, um, they're going to stop at, I believe, the Huck Ten boundaries, so it's not going to be quite as detailed as what you would have with these studies.
Okay.
Um, and as for the Parkway Life Ditch, we could throw it out there and see if we get an answer back quickly, um, and use the ARPA funds as match if it was approved, so.
You want to do that?
Yeah, we're going to do that, that's fine with me.
We'll include that as part of the motion, so if you don't take second, any other tributaries that we need to think about, or we could add those at the next meeting if you come up with any. I'll come up with some for the next meeting. Okay. All right, so there's a motion and a second on the floor. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Anything else you want to say about that?
Other than thank you and that, that's got it. And y'all just let me know if you have any questions. Do I need to say after, or?
Does anybody want to talk to Ms. Smith after the meeting?
I can email if I have anything.
Okay, that works then. All right, thank you all much.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, item number five, discussion and possible action concerning outstanding and future compensatory, compensatory time for all offices and departments, including a possible policy amendment to address transfers of comp time. What I'd like to do is, uh, I had sent this, uh, spreadsheet out to all of the elected officials in department heads. Not every elected official in department head has, uh, personnel with comp time on the books, but if it's okay with the court, unless we want to speak first, I'd like to open the floor to any elected official or department head who would like to address comp time in their department. Is there anybody that would like to come up and talk? Ms. Beckton?
I'd just like to say, I know, you know, we, we keep comp time accrued in our office with elections, especially this year, having so many elections, i- it's hard not to get comp time.
Judge, is that something we can explore if, if her staff would like it, that we just pay them overtime during elections versus comp time?
Something we could budget for next year in the election budget, uh, maybe something we want to look into.
While on that note, uh, in our, uh, salary meetings, that's been an idea that's been thrown around that, that might come before the court as a, as a recommendation is to add, uh, some overtime in the budgets of some of these. I think Ms. Cook's, uh, budget as well as the clerk, I'm not, I, I can't remember about the district clerk, but that's going to be part of our recommendation as well.
That's a good idea. Let me, uh, make a couple of notes here before we go too much further, and that is, uh, since you brought up Ms. Cook, she had sent me an email Friday, I believe it was, to let me know that all the comp time in her office has been taken as of, uh, Friday, and I got a similar message from the treasurer this morning that any outstanding comp time in her office was taken by as of last Friday. So these balances are as of March the nineteenth, and they've changed since then, and those two have let me know that they have used all their comp time, so there's no balances in those offices. So I wanted to bring that up. I, I would make the recommendation, and, uh, and again, we can discuss further amongst ourselves or any elected official or department head that wants to bring it up. My recommendation would be, there's some of them that have asked us to go ahead and pay their people, and we do have five elected officials on here that have some comp time that, uh, they were told when they became elected officials, that comp time would just sit there in case they ever became an employee again, and they, that, then that would stay on the books. Uh, Melinda's done some checking with TAC, and that's not exactly true. Uh, just for instance, Connie just became an elected official or, or an appointed official. She'll be elected in November. I don't think anybody's going to beat you between now and then since you're unopposed, but she's one of them. Uh, she has a little bit of a few hours on the books, and she should have been paid for that when she transitioned from an employee to an elected or an appointed person. And so there's five people there. I would say we should pay those. Um, TAC recommended that we do. In fact, they wanted us to do it immediately, and I asked Melinda, let's just wait until we address all of them. And then, uh, Commissioner Cooper's got a man that wants to be paid. I think we should go ahead and pay him, unless you want to say something different today?
That's fine. Uh, I would just say, uh, speaking for Rodenbridge One, if you normally see, uh, comp time, that's because the employee requested it because they wanted time off and lieu of pay, but that's just, we usually don't have much comp time.
Right, and by two highs, uh, uh, we're going to pay, I can give you the hours that we're going to pay them. And then Commissioner, uh, Roberts has a man that he wants to pay. I think we should go ahead and do that. And there might be some others, and we can go through and talk about each of those individually.
All of mine wants to be paid.
All of Commissioner Reynolds wants to be paid. I would say that, uh, anybody who's, that's got comp time on the books prior to this fiscal year, we should go ahead and pay that. Anybody that's got comp time within the past twelve months, um, let's wait and see if they'll use that time between now and the end of July and revisit this in August and see about either paying them, if they're not going to be able to take the time, or, uh, what we want to do. The issue is, and I brought it up, and I don't know if we've talked about it in an open meeting, but let's talk about it today. And I don't want to pick on anybody, but I'm going to, uh, and Matt's on here, he's listening, but in the, uh, county attorney's office, there's an employee there that accrued a bunch of comp time before he was the county attorney, and in fact, I've been told by the district attorney, this comp time's been on the books since before she was the county attorney. That time was accrued years ago at a much lower rate of pay, and if we pay her today, she's going to be paid at a much higher rate of pay, and I just don't think that's right. But that's where we are, and if we just let that keep sitting here, then she, when she retires or, or quits or separated from the county, we got to pay that money, and it's at the rate of pay they're making on the day that they separate or retire. And so I just think that we ought to go ahead and address this now, and it's probably something we need to start looking at anyway.
I would agree, uh, Judge, that we should go ahead and take care of it. I think the county was in, before I got on the court, was in a predicament like this several years ago where they had to do that as well. My suggestion would be, and I'm sure everybody would agree, but I think we're limited on what we can do, is let's find out why this happens, and let's put a stop to it. Now, the sheriff's department is probably going to be the biggest one, and I don't know because of the way they're regulated by, uh, jail regulations and everything, if we can stop comp time unless we put a whole bunch of money in their, in their budget for overtime, and I, I don't know what we need to do about that, but I think because he is the biggest department, that's where the biggest, uh, comp time buildup is. Is that correct?
Yes, and, and he's had a lot of issues, which we've discussed before. I don't mean to call them issues, but with COVID, he's had to bring people in, uh, he don't always have people that want to work, but the ones that want to work, they come in, and sometimes they're paid overtime. Sometimes that comp time accrues.
So is it, is it my understanding, uh, either from the sheriff or HR, that we can't regulate how soon they can, they're mandated to take that? In other words, instead of letting it build up, do they have ninety days? Can we mandate that or not?
Well.
Go ahead, Sheriff.
Let me, let me give you my opinion, interpretation on that through the Fair Labor Standards Act and the Wage and Hour Board. So, public safety employees, which is defined in our case as corrections officers and peace officers, if the agency, if the governmental agency has a policy that provides for comp time, then those employees by definition are allowed to accumulate up to four hundred and eighty hours. If your agency does not have a policy where it awards comp time, then obviously they're paid at the appropriate rate for any time they work above their normal hours. So that's what gets us in a position with jailers and deputies. By federal statute, they're allowed to hold up to four hundred and eighty hours. There's some, discussion is a nice way to put it, between differences of opinion between TAC, Fair Labor Standards, and the Wage and Hour Board. I visited with Melinda as recently as the last couple of days, reaching out to, to Wage and Hour to try to get us some interpretation on, part of the law says that you're able to mandate when they take, you're able to order them to take comp time. But that directly conflicts with the language that says they're able to accumulate up to four hundred and eighty hours. So if I'm that employee and I go, hey, my employer has a policy for awarding comp time, that's the first hurdle. I've taken comp time in lieu of money. I want to hold up to four hundred and eighty hours. And no, you can't tell me that, you can't force me to take it off. If I want to take it off, you have to make a reasonable accommodation unless it becomes a, a, uh, a burden to the agency. So you're in this catch-22 of if you award comp time, then those two qualifications, classifications of employees are able to accumulate up to four hundred and eighty. And whether it's earned at fifteen dollars an hour or twenty, at the day they separate from the county, for whatever reason, it's paid at that current rate. So you get further and further and further behind your funding. So, uh, one of the suggestions that I've got is either do away with comp time altogether, uh, a manager policy where you're saying, hey, I'm not going to have comp time anymore. We're going to go to a straight payment, and anything that's accumulated after this date will be paid. And then that comp time is there, it's going to stay with them until they separate employment, and eventually, as those people come off of their payroll, that comp time level will be down to, to zero. We'll work our way out of that. Unfortunately, as long as the policy says comp time is, is, is available, it's an option to the employee, those two classifications of employees can, can hold up to four hundred and eighty hours, and I can't make them take that. Now, TAC has a little different input on that, and TAC says, yes, you can force someone to take comp time. And I agree in theory that you can, but not if they're in a protected class like jailers and, because they're able to accumulate the four hundred and eighty, so.
Well, I understand you can't make them take it off, but could we pay them? Like before the end of this fiscal year, if we decide we want to pay that off?
I think, yes, I think you could. I think the county definitely reserves the right to be able to do that.
Would you, would you say in, in your situation currently with your employees, both, uh, jail and law enforcement, is, is the situation where you couldn't, they couldn't take off to, to, to claim their comp time?
Right.
Or is it a situation where they want to build it up to get paid?
Yeah, I definitely think that's been a case outside of the last eighteen months. I mean, that's the unlikely thing we've ever seen. But in the jail, yes, that continues to remain the case. Because of the minimum staffing that the jail commission requires, uh, that's the only division of our county government that, uh, juvenile attention, uh, that mandates how many employees you have to have on duty at a time. Uh, there's nothing that mandates how many deputies I have on the street, okay? It's only in that jail classification. So the moment that, that level drops, somebody calls in sick or whatever, and it drops below that, that required mandate, I've got to have somebody on there. So they're going to be coming in. They've got to be compensated if they work, you know? There's a sliding rule, and on the public safety side, it's, it's eighty-six hour mark and, you know, uh, uh, how much they may pass that as a straight time or overtime, but, but without muddying the water a whole bunch, there have been times, and there are going to continue to be times, that you've got to have that certain number of people there, and those that want to take off can't take off because you're at minimum staffing. And, you know, we did the math and had the little chart here about two years ago where we said that we're getting further and further behind every year because the accumulated time just in annual leave, just in vacation and holidays, there's more hours to be taken off than there are hours to take it. And so even if you said, hey, we're going to make sure that any day we're over on the scheduling, if you would, on employees, we're going to make sure that somebody's off. We're going to say, hey, you need to take off a holiday, you need to burn a holiday, or you need to put in for vacation, or you need, even with that, we'll still be behind at the end of the year because there's more leave available than there is time to take it, if that makes sense. And, and, and the only way to do that is either increase your staffing level where there's more people working or reduce the number of leave time. Well, obviously, that's not, we don't want that to be an option. So that continues to put us behind and behind, and they're just not taking the comp time. Um, I'm quite sure that like y'all's employees, mine would love for you to walk in there and say, hey, we're going to settle with you, and we're going to pay you, or we're going to pay you at least down to a certain level. Um, that's, that's, it's a lot of financial.
If this court decides that that's what we're going to do, and, and just taking, taking your department in consideration here, it might be, uh, beneficial to us monetarily to put two new people in there instead of every year paying two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in comp time, whatever it might be. I mean, that's not every year, but whatever.
I agree. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, you're going, I mean, you're going to have to get some breathing room because otherwise you can't take off. Hey, boss, I'd like to take off next week. Uh, sorry, I've got one in training, and my jail count's at a hundred and sixty-seven, so that requires me to have six jailers on the floor. And sorry, not only do I not have six, but I'm going to have to call somebody in so no, you can't take off.
Can we identify time that was accrued during COVID and pay it with ARPA funds? That'd be a question for the grant administrator. I would think that we possibly could do that. That's going to be very hard. I don't know if I'm speaking out of turn, but I think it'd be hard to figure out. Treasurer should have a record. I know that, I know that research.
She's raising her hand.
Oh, yes.
It's, it's eligible under ARPA, but, um, It's, it's eligible under ARPA, but um, we would have to be careful how to frame it because um, we couldn't consider like any kind of premium pay or yet because the Texas constitution uh prohibits retroactive payments for work with words. So, there are some sick time and um, leave provisions that we could possibly look into, and I'm not sure if this would fall into it since it's comp time versus actual leave taken, but we can, we can certainly look, but.
Unless for hours worked.
I think it would be uh, pretty easy. Uh, I've been to a couple of uh, schools on, on that particular uh, situation where you gotta claim lost funds due to COVID. And then, and, and what, ma'am?
And supplant the, and supplant the.
And, and you could go back and get the uh, time sheets during COVID just for his department. Uh, I know he wasn't buying there for a while, so. But that's just one area, it's still gonna be a problem overall.
Correct.
Did y'all go back and document those time sheets the way we talked about?
Yeah, and, and we're, we're almost got it finished all the way back to October one. Uh, I visited with the auditor and we agreed that we would go back to uh, October one of this budget year.
Right.
And, and so we're working on that, I think those are almost complete.
So we would have that documentation.
That biggest hurdle paper trail, exactly what you're saying, was uh, you took off, you called in sick because of COVID, and I have forced you to come in and work overtime. We wanted a paper trail that says Chris worked and earned eight hours of overtime because of COVID, and he was covering for employee of him who had X number of hours off sick. We wanted to be able to tie those two together just so if we paid that overtime and it was COVID related, who was the COVID person that was out? And so that's what we've been working on is trying to have that paper trail so that any expense, you could go back and go, okay, he didn't just work over, he worked over because somebody was out sick, that met the COVID definition.
So we should be able to do that for comp time, right?
Well, that's what she's saying, I mean, we, it does affect the overtime because we actually did physically pay that overtime, is what the sheriff is talking about. So instead of it going to the general fund, we're gonna be paying that out of the ARPA fund, but what she's saying is we haven't physically paid this comp time yet, but it is hours worked, so she's saying that you can't go back. It's what.
I'll, I'll check it, I mean, if it, if it's.
For comp time, but we did pay the overtime.
If it's basic salary and benefits, then we should be okay. As long as there's no like premium pay.
Oh, yeah, it's not premium pay, it's actual.
There were one or a few counties that didn't do premium pay.
Well, you're, you're one of the few who are gonna be okay then because a lot of those are, are gonna be um, struggling with some of that, but but yeah, I mean, I, I think we'll just need to look at it, if you don't mind, you know, I mean.
Cause I remember that one a lot.
I thought that might be, I think it should be fine.
One, one other thing, um, just and not to steal your thunder, but because you may have something to comment. Melinda also were looking at ways to reduce that uh, time on the books. And one of the things, it's my understanding, there is a, you have a year, correct me if I'm wrong, to take a holiday. So if you have an earned holiday and it's on the books and there's a year to take that, tho- those are accumulating up. If we shortened that window or when you could take those down to sixty or ninety days, that helps us, we're trying to avoid, let's be honest, we're trying to avoid that employee who leaves and we're stuck paying them out this exorbitant amount of money. Now, that's fair because that's time earned, that's, that's hours of, that they've worked, that they've performed, that they're due to have compensation for. But when you're looking at the holiday side, and you've got the six, seven, and eight, and nine holidays, and, and they just earned them all year long, and in October they leave and go to another job, and we're stuck paying out seven holidays. If we had had that window that was a lot smaller, of a sixty or a ninety day to take that, use it or lose it, puts me in a little bit more of a bind on the jail side, okay? That's just one more reason I've got somebody that's trying to get off, and then I gotta pay somebody to come in.
More time to get paid out.
And so at some point, is it a catch twenty-two? But that's one of the other things that we looked at as a possibility to help reduce the time they're on the books is to, to shorten that window, how long you can drag, because we know you can roll over one week of vacation. One of the other things that we looked at is that you must use comp time before you can use annual leave. And, and again, we're just trying to think outside the box and we were brainstorming, and I said, hey, that's, that's one of the options if we, if we say, hey, before you use vacation, we're gonna mandate that you exhaust your, your uh, compensatory time or your holidays that you have on the books.
I remember right when I got on the court, Sheriff, uh, Sheriff Kane and Rose came to us. It was either sixty or ninety days and they asked us to make it a year.
It was ninety days.
Yeah, we're having a hard time.
Yeah, it used to be ninety days, we had, we had to burn the holiday. But what you're saying too, though, uh, yeah, we used to get paid, what, up to two weeks vacation if we wrote, didn't, didn't use it. Uh, the, the bad part about what you're saying, if you make them do it before they do annual leave, then now they don't get paid for it, they're gonna lose their annual leave if they don't take it. So you're, you're losing m- money that you, yeah, I mean, it's a loss all the way around, it's, it's just not fair to the employees, I don't see that being fair.
I think we're in this predicament because we've been too fair to them.
That's exactly, uh, well, um, um, I think it's because we, we allowed the comp time to blow up like it's blown up o- over the years, and it has, I mean.
And unfortunately, on the, on the corrections and deputies, if you have a policy to pay it, there's nothing you can do to prevent that, they have a right to accumulate up to four hundred and eighty hours.
Right.
So, I think that's your biggest decision is do you allow that to continue, knowing that you're gonna have those that, that, that amass that? Because the employee's gonna look at you and say, I don't get paid for unused sick time when I leave, this is my way of having a severance package.
But our personnel or our policy for comp time, it does say an employee can be directed by the department head on when to take the comp time off.
And, and that's the, that's the thing that's at odds, is the employee comes back to you and says, I agree you can direct me to take it, but I want to maintain up to four hundred and eighty hours. And the law says I can.
On those two classes of personnel, yeah.
Yes, so it's kinda like, okay, how do you, how do you work around that?
Well, it's in our policy that the other employees can do two forty.
Yeah.
And then your department four eighty.
Yeah.
But I still think it's left up to elected officials and the department head to make sure that they do it.
We typically, first days off is personal, and then we go to comp and then vacation. It's typically in Roden Bridge too. Your first two days that you need to off, holiday, I mean, personal, because you lose those if you don't use them. And I want them to lose them, so they use those two first, and then we start using comp time, and then we start going to vacation time, because.
I really do think a lot of the department heads and elected officials have addressed this with their employees, and or it could have been.
Oh, this is not a countywide issue. And, and I'm not picking on you, you're right.
No, I, I get it.
It's just when you see there's a hundred and sixty thousand dollars sitting there plus fringes of, of comp time sitting on the books, it's kinda staggering.
I think, uh, that's a good idea that, that y'all come up with about taking the comp time before you take your vacation. Uh, you're still gonna be in a position over there that you're in now because of the nature of the beast. But also, uh, we need to work on uh, implementing more uh, money into your overtime budget.
I agree.
Well.
I bet he don't say no to that.
Yeah, I mean, let's be honest, it's, we're trying to make good business decisions with taxpayer money, and I get that. A- and that's one of the things that, that your HR director is, I mean, she's committed to, to trying to come up with something that is a workaround that's, that's good business sense financially, but it's also fair uh, as an advocate for the employees. And sometimes it's kind of a tough wiggle room in there, and we've, we've had a lot of discussion, and I think we're on to something, I think we're making some progress. Uh, but at the end of the day, we, as administrators, we've gotta do what's right with our taxpayer.
When you're an hour before a shift starts on the weekend and you're Scott or whoever's trying to call somebody out to fill up a position in the jail, you're gonna take first come, first served, of course, because you're in a predicament, but two, try to keep in mind where that person stands on comp time, let's try to stay on top of that, I know you probably do, but.
Yeah, that's true.
Much like I said earlier, some people, they know who will come in, so that's who they call, you got others that turn them down every time, probably.
I think, I think it'd just be hard to dictate, but they, they not be able to take their vacation, even though they have comp time. Because vacation is earned vacation. We get it, we get so much for every year we work here, you know, you get two, four, you know, two, three, four weeks off. Uh, if we're not, or, or we don't, should we have to compensate those people for not being able to take their earned time off? It's so different than comp time. I, I just don't think that's fair to the employees, but going back to what you said, that I, we need to look at, would it be more uh, or better for the county to hire more people to work in the jail? You know, to fill these positions that all this comp time's been eating up? Would it, would it, how cost effective would it be to hire more people? That, that may be, you know, something to look at big time.
With the uh, the federal law that you was talking about, that says you can't uh, make them take it off of them a certain time, that doesn't affect vacation as well because our policy dictates when you have to take your vacation, you can only carry.
No, because the difference between vacation and comp time is vacation, that's it.
It's something we're given.
Vacation is, is an, an item that's, that's a benefit as opposed to a right.
An earned.
An earned.
Alright.
I think there's probably.
Nothing says you have to give them vacation a year, nothing says you have to give them sick leave a year, but you have to compensate them for hours worked.
Yeah, that makes sense. I think we've had some good ideas from the sheriff. I think uh, Melinda probably has some good ideas, and there may be some others, and if you wanna speak, you're welcome to, I just don't think we decided today. I think we take all this under advisement as far as changing policy because it's hard to paint everybody with the same brush. And we reevaluate this, say, before the next, uh, before the next budget starts. But those of you who wanna be paid, I think let's go ahead and talk about paying those now, unless y'all disagree with that.
I agree with that.
You're trying to speak and I kept talking.
I, I would like to check more with TAC than the um, everything concerning the FLSA. Because whenever I did reach out to TAC, I asked them specifically for law enforcement. And so, um, I'm not saying that the sheriff's incorrect because I did ask him to check into who he talks with, but I do wanna check into that more before a final decision is made. Because um, I know that's what TAC's there for, whenever I ask them questions.
I say we try to make a decision on what we're gonna do before the end of this budget year, so that we start next budget year knowing what, where we're at.
And I wanted to because of what Angela brought up about, um, that the department head can direct them to take off their comp time, I would like to check into that only because I know how much money it is and see if.
I think everybody can except for those two classes that the sheriff brought up. I don't think that they can be told to take off, I think they can be asked, and if they agree, they do, and if they don't agree, there's nothing that can be done, that's my take.
Okay.
We'll work together to clarify the, the differences that we'll get a no answer.
So Judge, you said you'd like to see those who are requesting to be paid to be paid?
Yes, sir, here's what I would say, and I'll go in, uh, you all wanna talk about this policy change before we go over who we're gonna pay?
That, all that deals with is just uh, employee transferring from one department to another within the county.
Yes, sir. And I'll read it, it says if an employee transfers to another department within the county, he or she shall be paid all unused compensatory time from the department in which the compensatory time was earned, compensatory time is non-transferable.
Do you think, uh, Angela brought it up about the elected official saying, you know, regulating that? Taking, taking law enforcement and, and uh, jail out of the picture, we can regulate this pretty much countywide, other than that right there without having a problem, I think.
Yes, sir.
With, with what she's, you know, the department head or elected official, other than the sheriff staying on top of it, I don't think we'll have a problem going in the future.
So you no need in, 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 in implementing this uh?
No, I, I think we should.
Okay, alright.
And I have something related but unrelated.
Sure.
Uh, Amanda brought a guy who were from the jail, kept him at the same pay rate, is that right? Okay, those of us who have jailers, that's a, that's an issue. So what I'd like to see us address maybe in, in budgeting is for those of us who have jailers, is to pay our jailers that are working in Roden Bridge the same amount of money.
The same amount that a jailer makes?
Yeah, or, or whatever.
I'm taking anybody from the jail.
Okay.
I had a deputy come and he was making less than what he was as a deputy.
Okay.
But I don't have a jailer right now.
Okay. Is he an operator, he's not working trustees?
I don't have any jailer.
That would be an issue if you was trying to get them up to deputy pay, but uh, I think we're good on, on that, on equal, would, would jailer pay as far as what?
No, not deputy.
Unless it's a line operator? I, I haven't looked at it in detail.
So you're not working trustees right now? Okay.
We can.
I just, I just hired two new employees, but neither one of them are jailers.
Okay, alright.
Get, get me on that information, we can present that to the salary committee.
Perfect, okay, related but unrelated, thank you.
Alright, well, I hate to call people out, but I think we have two for the motion, is that right, who we're gonna pay?
Well, I, I was.
Well, we need to know.
I would have asked to, uh, leave it to those that are, uh, presented by their, uh, department heads, and maybe have the department heads, because I haven't sent you a list yet, and I need to just double check with mine, but I have two that I would like to pay.
And I'll agree with that with, with Chris, if, if we're gonna move in that direction and pay, then I'd like to, I'd like to survey the ones that are got and let you know.
We'll need documentation in order to run through payroll so you don't get with the HR department issue, you can fill out a payroll change form with the name of the employee.
Do y'all wanna pay the ones that we know today and then take up another list at the next meeting, or not pay anybody today and do it all at one time?
Do it all at one time.
Well, I think we oughta pay the one, go ahead and pay the ones up front, get them out of the way.
I mean, I asked for this three weeks ago.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I think so.
Pay the ones that are already up there and remember to go, go away.
What if, what if we put in the motion that we, how's it worded? Outstanding in future commissory time for all offices and departments, including the possi- possible policy. They don't say anything about pay though.
They don't.
No, it just says, take action on comp time, doesn't say exactly what action.
So you can make in your motion, uh, the ones that you, that you know of and the ones from the sheriff's office or who, who else is it? Just include that in, in the motion.
Yeah, well, anybody else after that and then another, another deal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Why don't you just bring this back on April the twelfth and have a list and so the commissioners can say who we're actually paying?
Okay.
And then also have a plan of where the money's coming from, are you gonna take it from contingency? And if it's Roden Bridge employees, it'd be Roden Bridge contingency, and if it's general employees, it'd be general contingency.
It'd be easier to process as a payroll too because it's gonna have to be a separate pay type and it's gonna have to connect to all those line of.
So it will come out of the department's budget, and then we can decide whether or not we want to put that money back in their budget from uh, the fund balance, is that what you're saying?
You can do that, or you can create a line on them and um, the comp time, probably take.
It'd be a separate pay type, it would have to be a separate pay type.
Okay. Alright, then I move the table out of number five until April the twelfth, and I ask all of the elected officials and department heads to send a list to uh, HR, no later than the uh, five PM, the Wednesday before that, and I can give you the date if I need to.
Sure.
That motion by the judge, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number five is tabled until April the twelfth. Item six, considered request by Misty Sims' purchasing agent to correct award of dead for materials for Roden Bridge precinct previously uh, approved in Commissioners Court on March the twenty-second. Ms. Sims?
Good morning. This was my mistake, I, I used the tabulation as a template from the last um, six month fit or whatever. Um, East Texas asphalt contacted me right away and let me know they did not bid limestone based. So we would need to change that award to um, it's on page two.
Okay.
Vulcan materials would then become number one and Martin Marietta would become number two.
That the only change?
Yes, sir.
So.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Kirkland, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item seven, considered request by Misty Sims' purchasing agent to present recommendation from the evaluation committee concerning qualification statements received for engineering services related to the American Rescue Plan Act two thousand twenty-one, we call it ARPA, for ditch improvements and or other eligible activities and possibly award to successful vendor. Ms. Sims?
Qualification statements were opened on March tenth, twenty twenty-two at three PM in the purchasing department office. Myself, Stacy Eckert, and Erica Singletary were present. We received uh, qualification statements from Sigma Engineers, Fitz and Shipman, Lyle Engineering, Whitley Oliver Engineering, LJ A Engineering, and Arseno Wilson and Cole. The evaluation committee was Commissioner Roberts, Judge Ingram, Erin Tupper, Sheriff Davis, and Kevin Cummings, and they scored Whitley Oliver the highest.
Did they uh, recommend a number two or just going with a number one on this one?
They did not recommend a number two, I can tell you who scored second highest.
What does the court wanna do?
Whatever's fine, that, I mean, we, yeah.
We went with just the number one?
Yeah, it was just number one.
Second, he's here, he's gonna take care of the job, right? Alright, who made the motion?
I did.
Alright, motion by Commissioner Kirkland, seconded by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? Alright, motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, congratulations. Item eight, consider request by Misty Sims' purchasing agent to present recommendation from the evaluation committee concerning qualificat- qualification statements. Received for architectural and engineering services related to the American Rescue Plan Act two thousand twenty-one for courthouse renovations, jail renovations. Possible expansion of the courthouse annex building and/or other eligible activities and possibly award to successful vendor, Ms. Sims?
Qualification statements were opened on March tenth, twenty twenty-two at three PM in the purchasing department office. Myself, Stacy Eckert, and Erica Singletary were present. We received statements from Sigma Engineers, the LaBiche Architectural Group, Burns Architecture, Arseno Wilson and Cole. And DRG Architects, evaluation committee was the same on this one, it was Commissioner Roberts. Judge Ingram, Aaron Tupper, Sheriff Davis, and Kevin Cummings. They scored LaBiche Architectural Group the highest.
Move to first.
Second. Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number ten, when I amended this agenda the other day, I messed up, but we're gonna skip number nine and go to number ten. Consider request by Connie Beckton, County clerk, to approve amended notice of con- constitutional amendment election for May seventh, two thousand twenty-two. In which Harden County will hold a joint election with the following entities, Harden County Motors and Services District Five, City of Sour Lake, City of Coons. And the town of Rose Hill Acres and approve the con- consolidation of Rodden Precincts.
Solid.
Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion?
Well, I have a whole lot to say, but I'm gonna stay quiet.
Well, you're welcome to speak, would you like to speak? About the polling places or?
Premated doesn't know, watching online, I am Judge Minton. I appreciate Judge McDaniel, Ms. Connie Beckton and all of you for discussing this last Friday with me. I had questions regarding both the May seventh election and the May twenty-fourth election, having early voting only at the courthouse from eight to five. I may have used the word limiting voters' right to vote, maybe that should have been limiting access to voting. And I appreciate y'all changing those times to seven PM.
Just so you know, I didn't do it.
Well, I'm looking at it, it's gone.
Alright.
And I appreciate that. Um, for any voters that have not realized, I live off West Walton. These elections, May seventh, I'm gonna have to drive all the way to Keith Road to vote in a constitutional amendment election. Because we're consolidating and I understand that has to do with the V cards. The governor calling a special election on May the sixteenth, they created this May seventh election. But a point to that is these two amendments, I don't know that you call them amendments. They were passed in the House and Senate in August of two thousand twenty-one. So we kinda knew that a special election would be coming, possibility of a special election coming. I know we have to keep V cards for sixty days. And as a small county, we don't have the funds, we don't have the V cards to open all nineteen voting locations. It's just my personal opinion that we do limit access to the voters to be able to vote. When you have May seventh election and May twenty-fourth election, you have people from Saratoga and Batsen having to drive to the courthouse on election day to vote. I don't think that's fair, I just think as elected officials, department heads, that we could do better by our citizens. To get the funding in her budget to purchase the V cards that are needed to assist with this, um, and I'm gonna leave it at that.
Thank you. Thank you, Judge, you want to say anything, Miss Baker?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, well, we used to hold the V drives for ten days, now we have to hold them for sixty days. Well, we weren't expecting this constitutional amendment and then two weeks later we're having to do the runoff. We've always, and me and Misty talked about this, she knows how I feel, but we've always consolidated, there's never been a problem consolidating. On the constitutional amendment last year, we were open for the weekend, we had twenty voters. Now, I would never try to hinder anybody's right to vote. So I have, you know, talked with Alyssa and we agreed we'll stay open from nine to seven that week of early voting. But we're having trouble getting workers, I mean, there's a lot to it, it's not just open these precincts and we're good to go. It, it's a lot to the, to each and every election and Alyssa puts in a lot of work, she's done a lot of changes two or three times. Um, so I mean, we're trying to do whatever's right for the voter and to make everybody happy and it's hard on us.
I tried to recruit you somebody today at McDonald's. They were complaining about, you know, having them open and I said, are you volunteering? He said, I only get to come out to get my coffee, I said.
I definitely see, uh, your point, Judge, and, and it is a good point, but in my opinion, anybody, anybody that votes on a constitutional amendment, they gonna drive a hundred miles whether or not. You know what I'm saying, everybody's not voting. But if you're gonna make a point to vote, you will drive a hundred miles, but I, I know your point and it's a good point.
Yeah.
Not only.
On the runoff election, that is a party election and so.
That's correct.
Y'all made a, I, I'm assuming you made a recommendation to the party chairs on consolidating and they're good with that?
Yes, sir.
Even if they weren't good with that, what would we do, we'd have to go buy some more V cards or make it happen?
Probably.
And what do those run?
Sixty dollars a piece.
Okay, so, and this is a new law on the sixty days?
It, it's a new law, yeah.
It was ten and now it's sixty?
And now it's sixty and you always want a few for backups, case something goes wrong. Also, um, Alyssa had talked to Brandy, I had talked to Rod and they were fine with consolidating.
That was my next question, you talk to the local people in the runoff?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I agree with you, good points and, uh, if the V drives are sixty dollars a piece, I think maybe in the next election budget, we buy some more V drives.
Absolutely.
Yes, ma'am.
This is directed at Hebrew again, but this isn't just a local runoff, this is a state-wide runoff.
Yeah.
This, we're gonna decide our land commissioner. We want Harden County to have a voice in that, we're gonna decide our lieutenant governor, we need to have a voice in that.
I think that's pretty well decided.
Well, but you see what I'm saying?
Yes.
The access to get these people to vote.
Yes, no, 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 I'm not making light of what you're saying.
And if we only have twenty people come to a Saturday, Sunday, whichever it was you had said, those twenty votes count? So, and when did the new law for the sixty days come in, perfect?
We just found that out.
Cause in research.
After the primary on March first, is that when you found it out?
Cause in research in the election code, where it mentions sixty days of holding the V cars, the last time I could see the statute updated was two thousand and nine.
Well, I know.
That, you're right, it has been in, in the code since two thousand and nine. Um, it was never, the Secretary of State never pushed that, they never enforced that as much as they are now. Um, the consolidation decision for the May seventh, it solely lies on the county department office. The decision to put three, four, and five here was not made lightly, but it was done because we needed the V drives and the equipment. To be able to have the runoff just two weeks after. Um, the runoff consolidation, we made a suggestion, but we don't, we don't hold that power either, that lies with the parties. So if they would've said no, we would've had to purchase more. Um, and it's not just that we don't have enough V drives. Um, they're putting so many new things on us all at one time, they're discussing possibly having us hold the mach- the actual machine that's used in early voting. And at each location for election day, um, for us, the tabulation supervisor and election judge in the central count station. To have to print a report, um, to keep with our records from that actual machine. And what that does is basically it takes that machine completely out. So if I use five or six during early voting, I have to retain those, I can't pull the V drive out and reprogram them because I have to have that report. So, I mean, we're limited on, on a lot of things, not just our V drives.
One last question for you, this is a, an amended notice, what did you change, what's the change from the one we approved?
The one we approved previously had thirteen, sixteen, eighteen, and nineteen voting at Keith Road. Um, and that actually pulled a voting location out of precinct four commissioner and we needed one there, so, and, and that was my mistake. But I've corrected it to be in Parkway lot, which puts one at each commissioners precinct that we need.
Okay, alright, thank you very much, any other discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I'm sure nothing's been compensated to us from the state for changing out the rules and regulations, but, you know. Well, I was just wondering, you know, I thought maybe they'd give us a little bit more money since they always coming up with these unfunded mandates.
Right, I don't know, discussion only, have any out of not on the agenda without taking any action, is there any official here that would like to speak, go ahead, Sheriff.
Judge, I'll take you back to item four, I just want to plant one seed, we had discussed, uh, uh, some structure, uh, buildings for WIC vans, command trailers. I'd really like to try to revisit that if possible under that, if that could, could pass a, possibly be a capital improvement.
Okay.
Um, from the mitigation side, it's, it's a minimal purchased asset, uh, one of the ones that would be in there. Um, I think that would, would possibly help us as well and, and again, we're trying to mitigate against damage or threat or wind or, or whatever. I mean, it's a small, hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment that we'd really love to keep protected and, and, and so in the event of a storm, in the event of a, whatever. If it meets that definition, I think that's something I'd really like for us to consider.
Can we add an outside kitchen on, onto the structure?
Great idea. Uh, just over towards the where, um, we had authorized the, uh, purchasing agent to work with, uh, Whitley Oliver. And, um, come up with a, a storage building for the command trailer and the WIC van and the WIC, um, SUV. And WIC funds was gonna pay for it, we were hoping at least half of that and the county would look at maybe kicking in the rest. But WIC has totally declined to pay for any of it, so that's why the sheriff's bringing that up, uh, to maybe look at this funding source for that. So, uh, we'll discuss that this afternoon if you have time, Aaron knows about it, he can talk to you about it as well. And while we're talking about that, Jeff is here with, at Whitley Oliver, they did a great job putting a plan together. And, uh, he told us that if WIC didn't fund that, there would be no charge from Whitley Oliver to, uh, for their work. But if we find somebody else to pay for it, I guess you're gonna bill us for that, right? We would expect that. Any other discussion from anybody on the court or any, uh, official who's present?
Move to you.
Second. Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, y'all have a great week.